Let's try to do a D to update the roll call. Right, whenever you're ready. Okay, that's fine. All right, let's start with certification and closed session. Here. I'm going to abstain because I was not present. Yeah. Yeah. I just want to confirm that that is a yes from three board members because we're certified closed session. All right. Any actions coming out of closed session?
Mr. Chair, there are four student discipline cases and unless the board wants to pull them out individually, I recommend that the board approve those cases as discussed in closed session, 3A, 3B, 3C, and 3D.
A, B, C, and D. Right, I was not present for that, so I'm going to abstain, obviously, so I'll entertain a motion in a second. Second. All right, we have a motion and a second on student case 3A, 3B, 3C, and 3D, is that correct? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? And the chair abstains. All right. Now we need to adopt tonight's agenda. Have there any changes to the agenda that you all would like to make a motion on? Or would you like to see the agenda as is?
I'm making motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. All right, I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. All right, on to the consent agenda. Is there anything that you all would like pulled from the consent agenda and talked about individually? Also want to point out, since it's been a topic of discussion, that Letter B, Review of Monthly Claims, is available for the board supervisors to review if they'd like. And I'll entertain a motion to pursue to approving consent agenda as as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye. Opposed? Chair votes aye. All right, we are now ready for public comment. Any Flavanna County citizen or employee of the Flavanna County Public School System is welcome to speak. And the expectations are that you address the board, not individual members, that you provide your name and voting district, that you do not exceed three minutes, and that you're respectful. The board will not interact with you during public comment, but you're welcome to ask them questions directly following the meeting, and there will be a second opportunity for public comment later in the meeting. And the three-minute timer will be on the televisions, and whoever would like to speak first may approach the podium. I don't, I haven't seen a list, so you don't have to sign up.
My name is Georgia Josslyn, I'm from Cunningham District. We're still here talking about books, talking about how much this is taking from the community. Eleven people, twenty-three books. They took the time to reduce the book count, they took the time to create a spreadsheet for costs, they took the time to find alternatives to save the taxpayers' money. This one complaint could have costed school board budget over sixteen hundred dollars in just materials. Literally hundreds of hours will be spent on this, and it could have been so much more. It has the potential to literally be every book in the library. As of right now, there is nothing in the KLB to stop anyone from doing this again. There are no restrictions on how many books a single person can submit for review, no requirements to read them, just download a list from somewhere and poof, submit a complaint because that's what just happened. I believe I heard there are over fifteen thousand books in our high school library. If someone looked hard enough, I'm sure they could find something objectionable in each and every one of them. Profanity, violence, religious views, political views, occult themes, sex, gender, race, evolution, anything and everything. Ashley Crocker sent y'all a list, a detailed list of things that could be implemented to help alleviate this issue in the future. I wholeheartedly concur with that list and the recommendations I have heard from the members of the Literary Review Committee. I also urge you to step back and look at what your students are already saying about banned and challenged books. Read your own student newsletter, the Fluko Beat. They have a section called Music, Movies, and Literature. Corona Glass was apparently so good, it was reviewed twice, October 2023, and also back in March of 2022. Both reviewers encouraged readers to look into the series and other books written by author Sarah J. Moss, but every single one of her books is on the Pan America banned book list multiple times, and most of those in the top ten. Carrie, The Fault in Our Stars, It Ends With Us, Divergent, these are just a few of the other reviews posted. All are on banned books lists around the country. The Hate U Give was also reviewed, one of the most challenged books of all time. Your Fluko reporter wrote, "This hard-to-put-down novel forces readers to look at a difficult topic and perhaps look at life from a different perspective." I give this book four out of five stars. The only other time books were banned in the history of Flavanna County was back in 1970, when a newly-integrated Flavanna High School tried to implement a course in black literature. A week and a half into a three-week-long course, two-hundred-and-fifty people showed up at a school board meeting to protest the six books being used. The school board shut the course down that night. You know who fought for that course and those books? Who had the courage to speak in front of those two-hundred-and-fifty angry adults? Two courageous students and a teacher. Listen to your students, they are our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, my name is Ashley Crocker, and I live in the Fork Union District. I'm here today once again asking questions about the Learning Resources Review Committee. I sent all of you an email a few weeks ago with some suggested changes to the policy that governs the committee, based on what committee members themselves had questions about and what several community members would like to see. And the only response I got was from Mr. Reed, who said that he would respond later. He never did, but at least he acknowledged he had received it. The rest of you didn't even do that much. I understand you're busy with the budget season, which is a very important thing, and I applaud the work that Dr. Gratz, Dr. Kelly, and Mr. Key did last week at the Board of Supervisors meeting to defend the budget. However, members of this board have made it clear that they would prefer community members to bring suggestions for that committee straight to them, which is exactly what I did, and yet I was ignored. After attending the last meeting of the Learning Resources Review Committee, I learned that they planned to have only a few members read each book and then conduct small group discussions during the next meeting to determine whether or not a book should be banned from our school libraries. This is extremely concerning because one member of the public cannot possibly follow three discussions happening simultaneously. It is my understanding that in these discussions, that committee members will come to a consensus and decide on whether or not a book should be removed. It is therefore critical that these discussions happen separately so that members of the community can find out exactly what was said about each book. I am also concerned because it does not seem like each member of the committee will vote on whether or not to remove a book. Instead, they will simply come to a consensus. That makes it impossible for members of the public to know where each committee member stands on each book. The committee should adopt a voting process so as to be clear and transparent to the community. There were many other important items to my ten-point plan that was ignored by all of you, but one thing I forgot to include was that there should be an opportunity for public comment at those meetings. If committee members are the ones making the decision to remove or keep books in the library, they should be able to hear directly from the public about their thoughts before making a decision. Thank you for consideration, and I look forward to hearing your thoughts on my other ideas as soon as you respond to my email. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Barisi, I got, we received your email this afternoon, and I would suggest if you had multiple people, you only have three minutes, and you can't pass your time to the next one. So if you have multiple people that want to speak, I would speak in a second.
Don't speak.
This is for the board members. Okay. Yep, take care.
Good afternoon. I'm Joy Barisi from Mr. Key's district. Thank you all for your service to Flavanna County for your work on the school board. Each one of you shows outstanding commitment to our schools and to the students and all of them. My hope is that we can together find a way to allow more students to benefit from the services that you work so hard to offer them. Did you know that public schools lost over a million students in fall of 2020? That is the biggest decrease in enrollment since World War II. In our own county, three-hundred students filed a notice of intent to explore education outside of traditional classrooms in the fall of 2020. That was up from two-hundred before COVID, and they have not returned. The most recent numbers indicate that two-hundred-and-ninety-eight students have notified the schools that they are homeschooling this year, rather than enrolling in the public schools. I probably do not need to remind you that this represents over one-point-five million dollars of state funding lost to our schools. Who are these students, and why are they opting out of our schools? The National Special Education Advocacy Institute notes on their website that thirty-eight percent of the two-point-five million students receiving homeschooling have special needs. That is almost three times higher than the fourteen percent of students being served in public schools' special education programs nationally. These students are leaving because they have found a different environment which contributes to greater success for them. Perhaps there is a way to come alongside them and develop a program which will allow them to enroll in a public school without removing them from the structure that is contributing to their success. We, as parents and community members, are asking you to create the necessary services for these students by chartering a classroomless public school, which will serve students in the environment that is most accessible to them. After reading the summary before you, as well as the full proposal for the Life Prep Charter School Initiative in your email inbox, we invite you to discuss it, open it up for public comments, and vote this spring to launch it for the 2025 to 2026 academic year. This is your chance to be a hero for a population that desperately needs heroes. Will you please allow our community to support more students by using Life Prep to provide a classroomless environment in which they can thrive? Thank you.
Thank you. Sir. Three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Rob Ball, and I live at Nineteen Shortwood Circle here in Palmyra. I'm reading comments today from Dr. Alan McLucas, Twenty-four Zebek Road, who's a neighbor and a friend. Dr. McLucas is a former special educator in Albemarle County, a current special education researcher studying transition interventions in rural communities, and a lifelong Virginia resident. He apologizes for not being able to attend and asks that I present these comments. So Dr. McLucas states, and I quote, "I first want to thank the members of the board and the staff and the faculty of all Flavanna County schools for their service to support the growth and education of children in this community. I believe the public school system is the best public service that is offered in the United States, and I'm grateful for all the hard work that is necessary to keep our schools operating effectively. I know from personal experience that the job of educating children is one of the hardest that exists. Our schools are presented with the near-impossible task of providing a high-quality education for thousands of children and are often not equipped with the resources to do so. Rural school systems in particular face unique challenges in accessing resources and recruiting and maintaining high-quality teachers and related service providers, and these issues are compounded once you begin considering the diverse needs of students with disabilities, this specialized skill set that is required to teach these students with a high-quality education. With many students with disabilities, they are successfully graduating from the public school system, but outcomes for students with disabilities are more broadly continued to lag behind their peers. Additionally, rates for identification of developmental disabilities such as autism are on the rise, with the most recent estimates indicating one in thirty-six US children have autism, compared to only one in sixty-eight a mere ten years ago. This is why I believe the school system may benefit from a creative solution for connecting available resources in the community directly to students who need the most support. This is the vision of Life Prep Public Charter School and could serve to alleviate some of the increasing pressure and stress put on our students by utilizing instructional agents, parents, who are highly committed to the education of their children. Committed parents have a deep understanding of their children and would have time to commit to developing highly individualized instructional programming. Time to individualize instruction is what meets every child's need, is a resource that every teacher needs, but they're lacking because the necessity of supporting a classroom full of students, many of whom have complex needs. The Charter School presents a creative solution to this problem by utilizing parents as resources and providing appropriate collaboration and support from educational professionals to help them develop a high-quality instructional programming at home using evidence-based practices. The purpose of this school is not to withdraw resources from an already stressed public school, but instead to provide additional resources by utilizing families. I believe this sort of school-
Sir, I'm gonna have to stop today. You have an opportunity at the end of the meeting, at the end of the meeting to finish.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Sarah Van Ice, and I live on Possum Lane, Lake Monatello. I have a degree in elementary education, and I currently home educate my three children here in Flavanna County. In my eight years of being in homeschool communities and co-ops, I've met many parents who have made the decision to homeschool their child with special needs because they know that there are some students for whom a classroom is simply not the ideal learning environment. A classroom setting is a wonderful collaborative learning environment for many students. However, there are some for whom a large group setting filled with noises and distractions is not ideal, and it can even be detrimental. Many of these students could thrive in a classroomless environment. My middle child has been diagnosed with ADHD. Homeschooling has provided a flexible environment for her in which she's able to work at her own pace. This sometimes means taking brain breaks, taking her schoolwork outside, getting up and moving around while she processes information. Our home environment makes this easy to change or adjust things when necessary to accommodate her needs. When distractions abound, as they often do, she can move to a different room where she's able to concentrate or play music to drown out the noises of her siblings. They seem like simple solutions in a home setting, but it would be very difficult for a teacher with twenty-five students to be able to accommodate all of them in this way. Making many individual accommodations just isn't practical or conducive to learning in a group setting, but for students with special needs, it's crucial. Having a charter school that understands the needs of the students in the community would be invaluable to parents who have chosen to homeschool, and specifically to the parents of children with special needs. Providing an option for students like my daughter to work in an environment that's better suited to their needs would be empowering not only to the students, but to their parents as well. A classroomless school could provide additional support and resources to children who thrive in a non-traditional environment and could allow for a stronger partnership between families and schools. The need for this community support is growing, and we would be so grateful to see these needs met. I'm glory to look beyond the traditional setting for teaching our students and partner with us as parents as we seek to meet the needs of our students who thrive outside the typical classroom.
Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, and as I said earlier, there is a second round of public comments that the moving on to reports from our school board, student liaison, and I think you had a presentation for us.
Go ahead. So earlier today, I sent out a Google form to the junior and senior classes at the high school. I would have included the tenth, ninth, and eighth graders, but due to lack of time and planning for me on this forum, it just kind of came to me in the moment. I didn't. Also, we've had issues with these classes previously with mass emails and email chains just going awry. I'll try to get them in in the next month, month that I do. But I received about thirty, forty complaints and concerns with things. A lot of them do have to do with the new Wi-Fi blockers that were installed in the school system. I'm sure you guys are aware. Well, a couple were just talking about, you know, I like to use my phone in class. There were a lot of concerns that really stuck out to me. One of these was the incapability of us to be able to contact our parents and guardians during school, just like hours. Personally, that's big for me. I need to know if I need to go pick up my sister after a track practice in middle school, if my mom's got it, my dad's doing it, what's going on with that. A friend of mine actually ended up leaving her brother at school on accident because she wasn't made aware that she needed to bring him home. Another big concern with this is students who have virtual Virginia classes, dual enrollment classes. They use their phones to turn in their paper assignments. It's big in like our math classes where we have to like take pictures and send it in. Sometimes we're not, I know someone who almost failed an assignment because it was timed, and they almost didn't get it in on time because they weren't able to take the picture, email it to themselves so they could then upload it to Canvas that they were using. Another concern that has been expressed to me is the lack of communication between admin and students. Going back to the Wi-Fi blockers, we weren't made aware in advance if anything would be happening. Even when there was an email sent out addressing these safety concerns, the students weren't involved in this email. They weren't sent this email, which I don't think is right. I think we should be involved in this as this is affecting us daily. Couple concerns that I also got that aren't as big and don't have a bunch of explanation, but I think are still important, are parents picking up their children in the parking lot and blocking up the roads, making it take thirty-plus minutes just to get out and get home. Concerns with the water fountain filters, a lot of them are showing red a lot and aren't being changed for weeks on end, which isn't that healthy for us. Requests to put more funding into the art program is one that I got. A couple, a couple people said that, actually. And a concern with the school not being able to pay for SATs and APs next year, which I know that's a big thing. Everyone needs those to be able to send to colleges, and if we're making our students pay for them, some may not have that extra money that they can use to take these higher placement courses that they may need to progress in life. And the last thing is just the continued drug use and vape use in bathrooms across the schools, et cetera. It's bad. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. You did an excellent job. And we will can you email us that list? This, where the the list of issues that you had, you email that to us and we'll pass it over to you. Thank you. Anything else? We are moving on to reports. Mr. Gratz, reports from the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Poland. We've got a lot of business to do, and the Board of Supervisors will meet at 5:30, and among other things, they'll be talking about the school board's budget request. So I'll keep this somewhat brief. Diver, welcome. Glad you're here, and good job. There's a lot of exciting stuff happening in the spring. I sent all of you an update, and you can you can pursue those things as you see fit. I'll just highlight a couple. We did have Read Across America Week, and it was great to have a couple of board members come in and read to some pre-kindergarten students. The Eastern Regional Student Art Forum with the VSPA happened last night. We did have art submissions. So thank you for moving this meeting. That enabled me to get those art submissions there. I don't know yet whether they placed or how they did, but I'll have that for you at the next meeting. I want to call your attention to Glow Night. This is tomorrow night at Carriero's Brook. This is their Title I Activity Night, but it's gonna be just lots and lots of STEM activities and great, great activities for families and for kids. If you'd like to come out to that, I think it would be great. Fluko Fest is happening on the twenty-first, and we've talked a lot about that. I won't go into a lot of details, but it's a partnership between the parent and community advisory board members and the parent organizations of each school. It's gonna be at the high school, twenty-first, 5:30. There will be vendors and just resources from the community. I think there are about thirty-five that will be there. The theme of the event is for families to come and see what's in this general area for their, for their kids in the summer. So there's camps, there's all kinds of activities, sports activities, community events that will be there. Captain Hill will be doing a brief presentation, fifteen to twenty minutes for parents on just some of the the information related to drug use and some of the ways that students are accessing some things online, just to begin a partnership with parents and just to give them some general information and things that they can look for. And I encourage parents and students to come to that. And tonight at six o'clock, for those of you that are not going to the supervisors, you may want to head over to the high school. The speech team, the award-winning speech team, will be doing a showcase for any of them want to take a look at that. So that'll be at six o'clock. And if there's anything else you'd like me to touch base on, I'm happy to. Otherwise, I'll just end with this. Each year, the kindergarten at Central Elementary does a wonderful activity called the Wedding of Q and U. And this is related to kids learning that concept with letters, and it's an amazing event throughout the kindergarten classes. They really do it up big. The kids love it, and I'd love for you to come, if you'd like to come and just, just check it out. That's on March twenty-second. So with that, I'll just I'll move on unless there's anything you'd like me to go into.
Any comments from board members? No. Right, moving on to the grades four and five literacy curriculum recommendations from Ms. Suarez.
So Ms. Suarez is not here tonight, but you have a process by which you approve committee members to serve on a review committee to look at potential textbook adoption materials. So you have the cover sheet that gives you all the information around those committee members, who they are, what kind of functions they will serve in, and then if you approve this committee, they'll get to work, and then forthcoming will be textbook. They recommend that you will have the opportunity, and all the public will have the opportunity to take a look at any materials being reviewed. They'll be here at the school board office or any that are available and will be made available, anybody that would like to see them and review, including board members.
Any comments from school board members?
Mr. Gratz, you say if we want to look at the books that are being reviewed, they're here. Just like before, but
That's right.
we don't have any. Don't have one copy of each.
That's right. We may be able to get you some to take home. Absolutely.
All right, moving on to the FY fiscal year twenty-four budget update. Ms. Gillum?
Got the, in your packet, the most current expenditures. While when we continuing to monitor some of our costs that are such as substitute teachers, tends to be one that seems to be going up and down a little bit. And I'm also a little concerned about heating oil and propane. We're analyzing that for what we have in terms of the rest of the year, what we might have to purchase in that regard. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. We're, the federal revenue is just really getting hung up at the state level. We're putting in reimbursements, but it's taking them a really long time to process things right now.
Any questions from the board?
Ms. Gillum, what, what concerns do you have about the heating and fuel?
The heating oil, the gasoline, we were using a little bit more gasoline, but we were able to offset that with the when we went back for the contract for the rest of the year. We're able, actually able to cut that cost by twenty cents a gallon, so I feel okay about that one. But the heating oil and the propane, if I'm doing it annualizing, it looks a little bit higher than it's been. So I'm just trying to look at that and see how many more times we're gonna have to fill up for heating oil. And we use propane at Central for heating. Then we have some propane that we use for the greenhouses and things like that, but that's really minimal. So just trying to figure out, just projecting that out for the rest of the year, trying to make sure we're okay in those lines.
Thank you. Anything else for the board?
How about the FY twenty-five budget update?
You have in your packet the information that was shared at the Board of Supervisors, the updated budget book, the salary study, the presentation that Dr. Gratz and I did with the board. And then the last page is, there were questions that came up during the meeting that I told the Board of Supervisors, I'd go back and research and then provide them that information, so that last document or those charts and information relative to that. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions from the board?
I thought it was a great dialogue between board members. We, they've got a lot of questions. It was a little over three hours. So it was extensive, but it was, I think, a good productive time.
They're gonna, just to confirm, we're gonna, we're gonna have a conversation well in advance with the board supervisors about the, how they want the presentation to look. Do they want an actual work session like we had years ago? Do they just want Mr. Gratz to present? There's so many complications with us not having a meeting or advertising a meeting that, you know, if we don't do that properly, we can't have more than two board members there. So there's a lot of complications with not having that discussion well in advance. But we're gonna make sure that doesn't happen again next year. But in my absence, I was gonna be absent either way because I was in North Carolina. Know that Mr. Key does a great job and I think that uh Dr. Kelly was there as well. Excellent, anything in the meeting, Mr. P?
I thought it was, and, and I, I'm happy to take it upon myself that I assumed, I've only been here, this is my third budget here. My experience with them is me presenting to the board at the podium. I just kind of assumed that's what we'd be doing this year. But uh as you said, clarifying the future and I think, I think the, the setup this year was great. I mean, it was really conducive to a lot of good dialogue and some great questions. We left with some questions to answer, so I, I, I think that's very positive.
In the past, we had. Which, meeting in the, in the washroom wasn't a great idea because it was so many people in one room, but we had actually had both boards. Gavel in, an official meeting, and then we moved forward with both boards in, in a real work session. Um we only, I don't think we've done that in a number of years. I think it just depends on. The board and the county administrator at the time, we're willing to work with whoever. So for this year, but next year, I'm sure we'd be willing to work with whoever. All right, um Ms. Gillum, how about the A P Psychology Textbook Adoption Committee?
So we um, when we were doing the programs studies at the high school, I think we talked about this before, that we decided to add A P Psychology as a course offering. And um we have staff on, on um our current staff that are able to teach this as an elective course. We've sent the person to initial, some initial training and we need to adopt a book for the class. Um that would start, I don't, I'm not sure because they haven't finished their master schedule, whether it's starting in the fall of twenty-four or the spring of twenty-five, but we want to have a textbook in place. So this is um the committee that they're proposing for textbook adoption. And then they review the books and come back to you with the recommendation in May, so hopefully we can purchase the books in June. And then she's also going to go to more extensive training in June so that she's um fully prepared to teach this class. One of the tricks with A P classes is making sure that the teachers, teaching. The content that's going to be on the test and how, and knowing how it's gonna be tested so that the kids are prepared.
Any of these people on the committee have uh any kind of degree in psychology?
I do not know.
I, I'm just curious.
I do.
You're not evaluating people.
So I'm happy to assist if needed.
I don't see your name on here.
I know, I, I'm happy to assist if needed.
Sorry about that, I had to walk my daughter out. Any other questions or comments from the board? Ms. Gillum, um the Perkins Annual Plan Update.
This is your C T E local plan and budget Perkins. Uh Christie White is here. Um I'm. Um gradually turning over the reins to this program to her and um so she's. Um been working on the grant this year and she's here to answer any questions that you might have.
You want to come to the podium?
Welcome, Ms. White. Appreciate you being here.
The board have any questions, comments? Do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
No, this was my first year working on it. Um so I'm trying to tie it all in how it actually. Um goes along with our C T E programs, but. It's working, so hopefully it will all come and the money will lay out for our programs because I really think we offer great programs at the high school. And the middle school and I'm trying to close that gap, the middle school and the high school. Um so that when kids come from the middle school, they go right into, you know, what have may, what may have been their interest um in middle school.
Is there anything we can do to help you?
Hold that thought. You said which ones don't? Um, let's see, engineering does. Agriculture does, business does, just nursing, like our medical programs, that would be the, oh yeah.
We, Mr. Gretz and I have talked at length about. Working with uh Louise and Buchlin partnering with them and I hope, no, that's a, that's a long-term plan. I hope to see, before I get off the board in another year, I hope to see that we make progress on that. I think we, we've done well with K Tech, correct?
Well, we started doing a cybersecurity class with Louisa. Do you want to talk about that?
So Louisa got a grant last year, um and they reached out to me that we could have students. That may be interested in cybersecurity, so we had two students that worked in that program and they did really well. Um with that, Louisa is gonna branch off, I think after this year and it's kinda I think gonna stay. And, you know, in Louisa, but if we have kids that are interested, they said they would, you know, let Luana tag along.
Send our kids over there, do they do that? Okay, that's even better.
We're. Been in a partnership with P V C C for a, they were writing a grant for a lab school and then they decided that they would. Instead do it internally and so they've offered us some spots for that lab school and advanced manufacturing and I think. Ms. White has a few students that are interested and we're trying to see if we can work that out.
Yes, we have two students that um were interested in that. The only hiccup we came with that, I think they were. Twelfth graders and we wanted eleventh graders just so they could continue with the two-year program. But once again, they told us that if space is available, they will let those two students. Going that and then with K Tech, we have seven students this year um that participated with K Tech versus the four last year. So of course, K Tech is going through some changes, so I'm not sure what that's gonna look like.
What, what classes at K Tech were they participating in?
Um firefighting, auto and electricity.
Kind of our rule has been if it's something that we offer and K Tech offers, they need to take it with us because there is a tuition. And a travel expense associated with that and so it's just been the ones that, that are open there. Um but it, it, they, their students are placed first and our students get spaces if they're available. So not all of our kids are gonna be able to get into that.
And Mr. Key, can I add carpentry to that list as well?
Questions or comments from board members? Right, thank you so much. All right, moving right along, we have unfinished businesses. Is there any unfinished business that the board would like to discuss? Right, how about new business? Any new business from the board? All right. We are in action items. Approval of the Virginia D E Q Stormwater Facilities Maintenance Agreement.
So this is the agreement that was presented and discussed uh on first reading. You approved it on first reading. It's been reviewed by your attorney. Uh Dr. Stribling isn't here tonight, but nothing's changed with it. Unless there are additional questions that you have, I'd recommend that you approve it.
All right, I am. Entertaining motions from the board to approve the. The Virginia D E Q Stormwater Facilities Maintenance Agreement.
Uh I move we approve the V D E Q Stormwater Management Facility Maintenance Agreement as presented.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the V D E Q Stormwater Facilities Maintenance Agreement, please say aye. Any opposed? Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Randy, do you want me to sign that before I leave? I see the, I see your red handwriting on here. Don't, don't let me forget. All right, the approval of the Savannah County Public Schools twenty-four, twenty-five academic calendar.
Okay, thank you, board members. You've done a lot of work with the calendar this year. You saw an option that uh. Well, you saw the draft calendar that came to you last month. And had gone out for public review and Ms. Suarez brought you the results of that. I had been in all of our schools talking about this as well and I have thrown a little bit of a monkey wrench and I, I take full ownership over that. Uh the calendar that was presented and that went through the calendar committee. And that I supported was two days shorter than our current calendar. It's hundred and seventy-four days. I've been uh very vocal that I don't think there's anything magic about the required hundred and eighty days. Hundred and eighty-two, hundred and seventy-eight, I don't think there's anything that necessarily happens when you hit one eighty. I do get concerned if we go too far, uh if we decrease too far and as I reviewed the draft calendar. My concern was that if we lose those two extra days. With uh Carnegie units of credit that are being assigned at the high school secondary courses. If we were to miss, um it, it's hard to quantify this, but if we were to miss, say, four, five or six inclement weather days. My fear is that we would get into the, you know, pardon the term, but the nonsense that we see. Sometimes in other divisions where we start adding two, two minutes onto the day or three minutes onto the day. Let's add a day in June, things like that, that don't have any instructional merit at all. And all they do is let us check a box that we got a certain number. The reason is because of the, the Carnegie units of uh. Credits require seat hours. There's certain clock hour requirements there and I'm concerned. If we move forward with a one-seventy-four day calendar, it may be fine. I'm concerned that we might get into that depending on what kind of year we have with weather and it's obviously impossible to predict that. Uh this year has been another anomaly. It wasn't what we anticipated. We did put it out to the staff and put it back out to the community just to give them a heads up that the, the one you saw in first draft, there is another option. Coming to you. I'll tell you the differences and so it's two more days and the way we got those two days. Was to uh instead of starting in August on Wednesday, typically we start in the middle of the week. Option two has us starting on Tuesday. So that's one day. The other is uh we turned the day before winter holiday, which was a staff day into a half day. So it's a half work day instead of a full work day. Uh to be perfectly candid, I've been in our schools this past week. And I've had wonderful dialogue with our teachers. Many of them don't like this option. Uh for a couple of reasons. One is they really want that staff day, the full staff day at the end of the semester. Because they're gonna come back from winter break and have a, a, a whole new group of students and new courses to prepare for. And so I think that's valuable time and typically they've had two in, in January. And the other is that uh I have heard from parents and teachers, especially of our primary grades. That uh after a full summer away from school, it's really hard on five and six-year-olds to come back for five days. And so the, the three days is, is preferable. This one, option two, would turn that into four. I, I wanted to bring you this option and in full candor, just to tell you my concern, I, I'm a little bit concerned moving to one-seventy-four. If you approve the option one. It's fine. It'll be fine. Uh the worst-case scenario is that we miss a whole lot of, we miss a whole lot of. Days due to inclement weather or something else and then have to be really creative about how to make up the time. And I will assure you that I will do everything I can to avoid. Things like six minutes onto the end of the day or two minutes to the start time, which really. That just doesn't have any value for me, for students. What questions do you have? You may have heard feedback. I, I've heard feedback on option two. I haven't heard anything uh. I wouldn't say it's been strong feedback, uh but.
The only feedback that I've gotten, I consistently get this, is the half-days. A lot of folks don't like the half-days.
And we did, we did reduce those in option one and option two. Puts one back, so it's still a reduction for this year, but you're right, that those, those tend to be difficult for families.
I, I've heard quite often over the years, but also living with it with two elementary schoolers, the. Three-day week to start the school year is very, very much so preferred.
It is, yeah. And I mean, you know the difficulty. We do this every year. The difficulty is if we start when we start in August and we want to end. Before, by Memorial Day and we want the, the full ten days of the winter break. It's just only so many places you can find these instructional days. And we try very hard to incorporate the data we get from families. We want it to be and, and. A, as I've shared, our priorities are first and foremost, we want it to support instruction. And second, we want it to support convenience for families, for staff. A, a, and so to be clear. Either one of these work, I, I did want to bring you another option and make sure you were aware. That we do run the risk with one-seventy-four of potentially having some difficulty with clock hours. Uh there's no way for me to tell you what the chances of us missing days are, but.
Is your concern primarily focused on inclement weather with that?
Yes.
With the, the power can go out on the Dominion line and all the schools lose power and.
It's, it's rain, it's rain and flooding and trees down in the spring and fall and. Potential snow in the, in the winter. We haven't had a lot. And I, I'm sorry to be, and I hope you don't feel like this is wishy-washy. I, I, I don't mean to be wishy-washy. We can make either one of these calendars work well. And I feel like the changes, and I don't want to speak on behalf of teachers or families for whom it's difficult for a five-year-old, so I'm not suggesting that's a trivial thing. I'm just saying the changes I think are minimal either way. If we, if we go with it, I just. I was concerned with a shorter calendar.
Mr. Gretz, um in, in calendar option number one, how many bank days are figured in there?
Well, we, it, it's, it's really hard to quantify a number of bank days.
I mean, I know some of the previous years we did like ten bank days.
Yeah, so the concept of bank days is really, you have to either build a calendar with a hundred and eighty instructional days. Or if you don't, if you come down off of that, then your next requirement is to have a minimum of nine-hundred-and-ninety hours. Most school calendars, including option one, are well in advance of nine-hundred-and-ninety hours. So the concept of bank time, unless you build a calendar that actually designates days as inclement weather days. The whole concept of bank time is, is built on the fact that you've built a calendar that is in excess of your requirement. And so bank time is, means that if you miss a day, you don't necessarily have to make it up because you've built a calendar that's already more than the minimum. The, the question. The issue you get into if you miss so many days is not so much are we gonna, are we gonna go below the nine-ninety? Because we're not really in any danger of that. It'd be very hard for us to miss so many days as to get down to nine-nine. The, the question we get is that at some point, we're not, we're not gonna. Gonna be compliant with the nine-ninety, but have we missed so many that we aren't able to do what we need to do with our kids? Do we need to add time to that? I, I hope this is answering your question. I don't have, there's no set number of days. Because this calendar doesn't designate. Yeah.
Instruction time.
So six and a half hours of instructional time in a day. I mean, you can figure that, that the average school calendar probably has in excess of twenty-five to thirty of those. If you really wanted to cut down to the state minimum of nine-ninety. I, I would not want to do that and I don't know any division that does that. Now, some divisions do designate days. I've been in divisions where. We built a calendar that had four or five days on the end and they were, they were noted on the calendar as makeup days. And so if we didn't miss. We, we would, we wouldn't end, we wouldn't go full length of the calendar and for every snow day that happened. One of those would, would be assigned to that snow day. Uh my experience with that is that was a disaster. Nobody, once they got into the year, remembered that and, and the end of the year was the end of the year. When you start tacking on time, it, it becomes difficult for everybody to use. So I don't recommend it. I don't know many divisions that still do that, but.
Just to confirm, because I, if I'm reading it correctly, pre-K and kindergarten still staggers.
That's right.
Even with the option two, correct? So start a day earlier, but they still get that staggered offset?
Yes.
No, that's.
So in addition to the two days, just to make sure it's clear. August eighth becomes the open house date with option two. The first teaching day is the thirteenth, so you can see that. That's Tuesday, the thirteenth, instead of Wednesday, the fourteenth. Uh December nineteenth. December nineteenth, if you move, Josh, can you go down? There we go. So December nineteenth is now a full student day, whereas in option one, that's a half day. And the twentieth is an early dismissal, so that becomes a half-day year. So basically, instead of, instead of having a full, another day off right before winter break, it's an early dismissal day.
Any questions or comments from the board? And we need to, we need to make clear in our motion, option one or option two, correct?
Yes. And I mean, do you have thoughts on these two options or do you have a preference? Do you want to have a discussion?
To be fair, I, I wasn't aware of option two until, till I saw this.
Okay.
So personally, I'm in favor of option one. Just because that's what I received feedback on, that's what I've talked to people about.
Understood.
I hate to approve option two, but I haven't discussed that with anybody.
Sure.
That's just where I'm at, that doesn't mean I don't speak for the entire board.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would agree with that. I, I'm, I'm just asking so that I can clarify, would you want me to just go ahead and make the recommendation for option one? So that you're not in the position of trying to figure out what, what to move?
Yeah. Awesome, I will support you, but I just want to be clear that I'm in, I'm in favor of option one, just for the.
So let, let, let me just amend, my recommendation will be option one of the two.
I will accept a motion from the board to approve the Flavanna County Public School twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-two, five academic calendar. Option, option one, Mr. Gretz.
I'll, I'll make that motion, I'll, I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor of approving option one, the Flavanna County Public School twenty-four, twenty-five academic calendar, please say aye. Opposed, chair votes aye. All right, approval of policy updates.
So last month, you approved on first reading the amendments to our leaves policy. And the, the big one was that we were choosing to abandon the transfer leave policy in favor of sticking with the sick leave bank policy. Nothing's changed from what was amended and presented last month. I'm happy to answer questions if you have them that have come up. Otherwise, I recommend that you approve it as it was presented to you last month, it remains.
Any comments or discussion from the board? All right. I need a motion to approve the policy updates as presented.
I move to approve the policy updates as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the policy updates as presented, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, chair votes aye. All right, AP Psychology Textbook Adoption Committee.
So this, this is the committee that you will approve to review potential textbooks. You can see the timeline in the attachment, you're, I know Josh, if you want to open that up. Do you have questions about any of the committee members or the process or what will happen? Again, the materials will be made available, you've seen this once, now you would approve it and this committee would do that work and would bring you up. You can see the books that are to be evaluated there, there are five of them. They'll all be under review and available to the public. And they will bring you a book for you to approve in May.
Questions from the board? I need a motion to approve the AP Psychology Textbook Adoption Committee.
Make a motion to approve the AP Psychology Textbook Adoption Committee.
Motion?
I'll second.
And a second, any further discussions? Those in favor of approving the AP Psychology Textbook Adoption Committee, please say aye. Any opposed, chair votes aye.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along, we are on to our second round of public comments. Same rules as before and you have three minutes as well. Anyone wishing to speak, please come to the podium. We're finishing.
I have to finish, sorry. I know Dr. McClellan would, would want you to hear the end of his comments, so. Committed parents have a deep understanding of their children. They would have time to commit to develop highly individualized instructional program, instructional programming. Time to individualize and structural programming to meet every child's need is a resource that many teachers are lacking. Because they necessarily support a classroom full of children, many have, many who have complex needs already. This charter school presents a creative solution to this problem by utilizing parents as resources and providing appropriate collaboration and support from educational professionals to help them develop highly qualified instructional programming at home and use evidence-based practices. The purpose of this school is not to withdraw resources from an already stressed public school system, but instead to provide additional resources by utilizing families. I believe the charter school has the potential to allow the public school system here in Flavanna to increase its capacity to meet the needs of children with disabilities in the community. And I would strongly urge the board to consider the life prep proposal this spring with the intent to open classes starting in August of twenty-twenty-five. That's the end of his comments and thank you very much for, for letting me speak.
Sure. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Georgiana Jocelyn Cunningham District. I do have some experience with charter schools. Yes, they do cost a heck of a lot of money. Flavanna right now is going through their budgets and this Muschellian has spent so much time going through those budgets. She said at the Board of Supervisors meeting, they are running a very lean ship. You yourself, you're also doing the job of what, three or four people, you said? Y'all don't have a lot of money. Diver just said that you guys want arts, you want music, you don't have money for that. Teachers won't raise us, you want to be able to pay for health insurance, you don't have money for that. You're looking at cutting costs, you don't have money for SATs, you don't have money for PSATs. One of the things that was mentioned that the next thing is going to be cut is going to be AP testing. So where do you guys think you're going to get the money for charter schools? Keep that in mind, this is going to come out of your pockets, this is going to hurt y'all. So don't even entertain it, guys, Flavanna does not have the money for charter schools. This came up really big in the last election. It's going to hurt Flavanna more than anything, thank you.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we will close the second round of public comments and move on to school board member comments. Mr. Rittenhouse.
Yes, I'm, I'm interested in the questions that the board supervisors had. You know, I was at the meeting last time, but I left early, I wasn't there for, because couldn't be with two of us there with y'all anyway. But I, I may come this evening, follow one. Thank you all for everything you did.
Thank you. Mr. Key?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody that came tonight, thanks for the presentation, discussion. Thanks, Dr. Gretz and his field and from preparing the budget, like she says, lean. We do our best to try to do what's best for the citizen and the kids of Flavanna County.
Yeah, appreciate everybody coming out this afternoon. Thank you to both of y'all for presenting the budget last week. Just one thought that I have and I think is worth exploring just over the next, you know, ten months as we kind of evaluate budgets and numbers and things like that all throughout the year, is also just working closer with the board of supervisors throughout the year. Instead of putting it off until December, January, we get into the numbers. Quite frankly, I'd love to see, and I don't know the legality behind this, so I don't want to speak for anybody else, our whole board, you, Dr. Stribling, their whole board, I'd love to see all of us go through the schools, to be very honest with you. Have everybody be able to see what we are going to be voting on as a team. And then we also break down into more conversation between now and then. So might be a rookie comment saying that's not how things are always done, but I'm also a guy that says that we can look to do things differently than what we've always done it as well, so. All we got.
All right. I just wanted to mention that this is not the first time we've heard about the life prep school. It's been six, seven, eight months since Mr. Gretz first brought this to our attention. I would like to hear more about it in next month's reports. Because truthfully, we don't know. So before we put the card in front of the horse and make accusations about charter schools, we know nothing about this. So I would, I, I did read forty-six pages that was sent to the Department of Education. I read all of that and I got some opinions from Grace Creasy and some other folks. So I, I would just want to learn more and I want to get Dr. Gretz's opinion. And I think the best way to do that is for us to discuss it. At the next meeting, perhaps you can provide, you know, your opinion in, in the, in the reports in April.
Happy to, happy to get together with Ms. Berisi and others and together something to present to you.
I, I don't want, truthfully, I don't want the back and forth on the, like philosophical discussion on whether charter schools, I just want facts. And I'm, I'm interested, particularly interested in this being part of the public school and the state funding that comes with those students. Because I think that's a point that a lot of people are missing, they're focused on, their attention on the money. But the way that I read this and the questions I've asked is that this perhaps may bring in some state funding. Because it's not a brick and mortar school, so it's not your typical charter school. The other comments from the board? All right. The Flavanna County Public Schools School Board Meeting in April, is it April thirteenth, Ms. Kreiter? April tenth, I'm not looking at my calendar. Next meeting will be April tenth, excuse me, three P M. closed session, four P M. reconvenant open session. All right. Nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Adjourn the meeting.
Second, motion in a second to adjourn. Any discussion from the board? All those in favor of adjourning, adjourning the March meeting, please say aye. Any opposed, chair votes aye, we are adjourned.